First, staff, would you... Actually, before we do that, I'd like to pause this minute and introduce two people tonight. First, I'd like to introduce the interim director of planning and zoning, Rebecca Kiefer. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for what your part is. And then also standing in for our regular city attorney, Ted Baggett, who is part of the same firm. Thank you for coming. You're here all the time. Staff, could you introduce AX-24-002 for annexation, rezoning, and special use permit for the 28.28 acres at 5871 Hillside Farm Road along this set of others?
I'm a member of this church and in both of the developments, so with your permission, can I recuse myself?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so you recuse for this one only and then come back for the next one. Okay, thank you, thank you. Very good. Staff?
AX-24-002 is a proposed annexation and rezoning for 28.28 acres across seven parcels. Four of those parcels are located along Hillside Farms Road, two are along 20 Dan Road, and two are along Riverside Road. Some of the addressing is a bit confusing and kind of overlaps, so for the purposes of the presentation, we're going to be going by their tax parcel numbers, which are as listed. Here are these seven parcels, again located back on Hillside Farms Road, with two parcels along Riverside Road and two along 20 Dan Road. Here's the aerial image of the proposed annexation and rezoning, located behind the Publix at Sugar Hill Corners Shopping Center. So here are these seven parcels listed out with their current zoning and their requested rezonings, because there are a few different acreages and zoning provisions. And we'll kind of end now, go piece by piece, and looking at what those rezonings look like for parcels. The first three parcels, 7-339-121, 7-339-057, and 7-339-294, are the only three parcels of the seven parcels with any proposed changes. These parcels are currently zoned in Lenet County as either RA 200 or R 100, with the request to rezone to general business. This is the proposed site plan, so it is being requested to be rezoned to general business for the purpose of a worship center, a group pub, and an event facility. The worship center is for an existing congregation that currently needs a brewery in Swannie. The event facility would require a special use permit. That would be an event facility, as they describe it, as like would be for weddings. And then the group pub would be... So the applicant in their letter of intent mentioned either a group pub or a microbrewery. They have communicated to us that their intent is a group pub at this current time, not a microbrewery. If they want to pursue a microbrewery farther down the line, that would require a special use permit. Since they have communicated a hint for a group pub, we are not currently recommending the special use permit, that would be if they pursue that down route. Part of their application is requesting a variance for an existing structure. It's located at the first parcel. It's kind of just past Pickleball Court issue. That would be a buffer reduction to 50 feet from 75-foot undisturbed buffer against a residential zoned area. That is an existing building with no proposed changes or increased disturbance to the buffer. They can let it be required to, if it is going to be used for a commercial use, to bring it up to commercial standards, so for ADA accessibility, things like that, but there would be no other changes allowed to that building. And then they're also requesting a variance from the 75-foot undisturbed buffer at kind of where the road continues and stops, so that's for an existing shed, and there's a pavement area there and an existing clear area. They're not proposing a use for that at this time, they're not proposing any current changes, but with flexibility to potentially use that for overflow parking in the future. And then moving along, these two parcels are currently zoned R 100 in Lenet County. One of them has a single-family detached residence, one of them is vacant, and they are proposed to be rezoned to RS 100 in the city of Sugar Hill with no proposed changes and as the most similar zoning to what they're presently zoned in the county. These two parcels, 7-639-21 and 7-339-293, are presently zoned RA 200 in Lenet County. They are owned by Root of Transmission Corporation and currently host a substation. They are proposed to be rezoned to AF Agricultural Forest District with no proposed changes in use or to the site. So AX-24-002, the staff has three separate recommendations. The first recommendation is approval of the annexation of all seven parcels. The second is recommendation of approval of rezoning and the special use permit for an event center for parcels 7-339-121, 7-339-057, and 7-339-294, with the following conditions. The first condition looks at the site plan, so adhering to the current site plan with necessary changes to accommodate other conditions specified. The second condition is pertaining to traffic and flow traffic to ask for a traffic study to be required and any necessary improvements to be made. Number three is the applicant shall secure an amusement, Brew Sugar Hill Corner Shopping Center, or demonstrate that there currently is amusement in place with any potential changes needed to work for the commercial use. Number four is bringing buildings up to commercial code if they are being used for commercial uses. Number five, within the site plan, Rebecca, for the three parcels, they included pickleball courts as well as a trail as a potential future recreation use, so those are not part of their current plan, but some have the matrix in the future. So condition number five looks at the pickleball courts and that they need to be a minimum distance from residential property use, depending on the products used for the pickleball courts and the noise associated. Number six looks at the natural gas appliances. Number seven, the zoning buffer shall be reduced to 50 feet from 75 feet for parcel 7-339-121, rent via existing structure. And then number eight, the zoning buffer shall be reduced to 15 feet from 75 feet for parcel 7-339-057, through the existing structure and clearing. Additionally, staff recommends approval of the rezoning for parcels 7-339-026A, 7-339-025, 7-339-221, and 7-339-293. Those are the four parcels that do not have any proposed changes and would be annexed and rezoned to their most similar zoning to their current classification. And that's it for the staff recommendation.
Very good, thank you very much, Claire, appreciate that. I'd like to remind everyone that this is an official public meeting, so please help us maintain an orderly meeting. We have a number that are going to be speaking tonight, and that would be helpful. Should you have an opportunity to make comments, either in support or in opposition to this case, please address all the comments to the board, not to the staff or other audience members from the lecturing. We also ask that you give your name, address, and whether you live in the city limits of Sugar Hill. We'll be providing a total of 20 minutes for each side. Normally it's only 10, but based on the number of people that will be put in class tonight, we want to give you time to do that. But that is for each side. If there are multiple people, which there are, who wish to speak, you'll be expected to divide that time among yourselves, so that's 20 minutes total for and 20 minutes total against. We'll keep track of the total time. Anytime used for questions by the board will not consume any of the total. So as the first order of business, we will... There will be three parts to this order of business. The first part will be the annexation of the properties in Sugar Hill. And the second two parts will be the establishment of the zoning of the two separate parts of this property. We're separating the establishment of zoning into two parts since there are recommended actions probably applying to one of those. And we will hold all the motions on all three of these until after the public hearing related to this case is complete. So again, we're going to have three sections to this, and then the motions will be after all three sections are done. So the public hearing for the annexation is now open. Would the applicants like to speak regarding the annexation?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. Good evening, Commission. My name is Drew Warner, and we live at 5602 Thistle Down Terrace. We are non... We're not in the city limits of Sugar Hill. We're in the Lanes Park subdivision. My purpose really tonight is to give some background, overview, vision, and purpose for this entire project up at the Hillside property. And so I'll start by just saying that my family and I have called Sugar Hill home for the past 20 years. I served as a pastor of Good News Church of Georgia, a church born from an idea that started 10 years ago in my mind and began in an unlikely place, a brewery, Monkey Wrench Brewing in Swannie, Georgia. The vision for our Hillside project stems from countless conversations with people in our community in Sugar Hill. Many people that we've met over the years, neighbors, friends, people in our school system that have become close friends over the years, have shared a common sentiment, basically saying, "I'm not uninterested in faith, I'm just done with traditional church and religion." This insight surprised me, but it led me on a path that I never really expected, didn't expect to be here, for sure. 10 years ago, I attended a workshop where I was asked a question, "If you knew you couldn't fail, what would you do?" And my answer, the first thing that popped into my head was, "I think I'd start a brewery and launch a church out of it." And that came out of experiences that I had around men's group, meeting on a fire pit in our neighborhood, just seeing lots of great things going on in those guys, in their lives and in their families' lives. And it sounded like a crazy idea. It felt crazy to me, but it definitely felt, I felt a strong sense that this was a calling I needed to pursue. So I drafted a plan close to 10 years ago, shared it with Paul Radford, the city manager at that time, and still today, and Scott Andrews, who used to work on staff with the city of Sugar Hill. They were enthusiastic and at that time suggested that we consider a space in downtown Sugar Hill. Though the timing wasn't right then, Scott introduced me to Wayne Baxter, who later founded Monkey Wrench Brewing. And shortly after that, we launched Good News Church at Monkey Wrench through that relationship. Our vision has always been to create a space where people can connect through an event venue, a wedding chapel, and a brewery or a group pub type facility. This Hillside project is about fostering real connections in a community where people seek meaningful relationships. We want to shift the focus from merely drawing large crowds to building genuine connections. For us, success is not about the size of the crowd, but the depth of the relationships that are formed in our community. An example of this, at the start of our worship service, each Sunday, we give people an opportunity to share what is their good news. Our church's name is Good News Church. We say, "What's some good news or highlights from this past week?" And a few weeks ago, Mom stood up and said, "My good news is that both of my boys are here." They were in their 40s, and she said, "Both of my boys are here in church with me this morning, and they're both sober. They both have been struggling with addiction their entire lives, and they're both in recovery and doing great." And so that was her good news. And so it's moments like those that are why we're doing what we're doing. A snapshot of our vision for the Hillside project is this, an event venue and a wedding chapel that will help sustain and expand our ministry and service to the Sugar Hill community. A coffee house, brewery taproom would serve as a hub for community interaction and connection. And our church would provide spiritual nourishment, especially for those seeking a fresh start. We envision this Hillside property as a peaceful retreat where residents can enjoy the beauty of North Georgia right here in Sugar Hill. It's a beautiful piece of property, and we intend to maintain it as much as possible, where people can connect with friends and experience the love, grace, and joy of God in the beautiful landscapes of that natural property. My family and I have deeply invested in Sugar Hill through our schools, neighborhoods, and community. Our church's growth has amplified our ability to serve, and we see this Hillside vision as taking our ability to love, serve, and bless the Sugar Hill community to a whole new level. I'd like to give a special thank you to the Bice family, the siblings, who currently own this property, Hugh, Michael, Ron, and Denise, and they share our vision. They're very enthusiastic about it. Hugh told me, they've been friends for a long time, Hugh once dreamed of building a wedding venue and a vineyard. I asked him, "If you could do anything with this property, what would you want to do?" And that's what he said he'd want to do. So we're thrilled that our aspirations align so perfectly. In closing, I'd like to share a verse to me that captures the essence of our vision. It's from Matthew 5, verses 14 to 16. It says, "As you're the light of the world, a city set on a hill or a hillside cannot be hidden. Let your light shine before men in such a way that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, who is in heaven." Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of the annexation? I got the second half of his speech, if that's okay. Yeah, you can put the next one up. If you can give your name.
Good evening, I'm Dave Lee. I live at 5427 Gotten Lane in Gainesville. I'm also a member and elder of Good News Church. First of all, I wanted to thank the staff for the recommendation and the conditions, and we've already begun to work on those conditions and satisfy them. During the day, I manage WH VAS. We're a general contractor based in John's Creek, and we have built over 3,100 retail and hospitality projects all over the country. A wide variety, but over 1,000 of those have been checked away. So I, we have a lot of experience working with city and county governments and their citizens to build products that enhance and benefit the community. That's exactly what we want to do with Hillside. So probably the big question is, how do we plan to build this grand vision that you described? Basically, we want to do as little development and construction as possible. I don't know how many of you have been on the property, but the 25 acres of Hillside is beautiful. It's naturally beautiful. And the last thing we want to do is take away from that. We want that natural beauty to draw people up the hill to our brewery, the vineyard, and especially the church. We want to disturb as little of that as soon as we can. We want people to see up that hill and to think they've just been transported to the North Open Islands. So we want to take down a very few trees and replace the three buildings on top of the hill where the land's already been developed. The brewery, as you can see on the sketch ad, the brewery is on the other side of the hill from the neighborhood, the vineyard's over the crest of the hill from the neighborhood. We want to do that one for privacy and also for noise. And again, we take down as few trees as possible. So to be a little more specific, we plan to use the drive that's already there, modify it, increase the traffic flow. All the trees that are around the perimeter, we don't want to take any of those down. We'd like to enhance that with some landscaping and, as mentioned, maybe a nature trail. The last thing we want to do is clear that. That's what we want the community to be drawn by, is that we have to do. All three buildings will total about 18,000 square feet. We do plan to have some outdoor seating, cornhole, a kids' playground, and hopeless a pickleball, although the pickleball court that we showed on the far right, close to the neighborhood, we're not going to put that there. We're only going to want to set them down the other side of the hill, close to the shopping center. The whole look we're going for is a park-like setting, not a commercial development. We want people to gather and connect and hopefully have an account with the kingdom of God, and that's more likely to happen in a park-like setting via commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you, I love this. Anyone else that would like to speak in support?
Ron Bice, living at 3027 Road. That's over at Metro Hogs Mountain, where that's located. You know, that's the other way. I'm the oldest of the four siblings, and I spent my first 20 years on that property. I was actually born in my grandmother's house right there on the corner, and I lived there till I was 20 years old in Jordan Avenue. So I've been all over those woods for many years, and we've all got a lot of emotional and attachment to the property, so we didn't want to sell it to just anybody. And we've had other offers. In fact, we had another letter of intent along the church that showed us theirs, and we even had it with some more money involved. But we decided to go with the church. We all agreed. We liked what they were doing. They weren't going to do a lot of disturbing on the property. It's going to be pretty much maintained. And we liked it because it would be open, it wouldn't just be residents coming in and moving, and they would be there. It's open to the public, and y'all can go there and enjoy it like I did for 20 years down there. Well, actually, more than that, because I've been down there plenty of times, done a little deer hunting down there. So if you go on the property, if y'all want to improve it, and you do go on the property, if you're doing a walking trail on the backside, better take your camera with you, because I can almost guarantee you'll see some nice deers back there. But just want to let you know that we are all in agreement with the citizens of this project. We really like it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in support?
Are you guys ready? Are you guys ready? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Sally Althoff. I live at 5427 Gotten Lane in Gainesville. My property borders the Bice farm, Hillside. So if anybody is affected, it is me. And I want you to know my next door neighbor, Alex, is... He's for this project, and so am I. Alex would be here, but he decided to have a baby tonight, so that's why they're not here. But I just want you to know, I've known some of the Bices, and I've known the Bices for 36 years I've lived there. And that property, you guys told me what they were going to do, and they chose these people because they will respect their land. They could have made it for more money. They could have sold it to the Chinese and built apartments like across the street, but no, they wanted their land respected, and you told me this group was chosen because they would do that. And I don't have a problem with it at all, and I just want you to know I support them totally in this whole project. And by the way, the trails are already there because you guys and I made them, and I blow them off all the time if you'd like to take a walk. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else? We have approximately eight minutes left. Anyone else that would like to speak in support? Okay, we'll maintain that time. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Do you have two?
I'm a resident of Sugar Hill. I live in Amalik subdivision, and my property also borders this application. My name is Monica, I'm sorry. Yes, I live at Parkway. I'm in the city of Sugar Hill. I pay taxes to the city of Sugar Hill. I've been there 29 years. The applicant, Hillside Holdings, requesting, is requesting annexation for seven parcels, rezoning to BG Commercial Property for three, asking for a buffer reduction variance. It went from 60 to 50 tonight, I was hearing, and a special use permit for 28-plus acres. My husband and I have made 240 house payments to pay our home off. We're seniors, we worked very hard to have this standing. Yes, it's really a lifetime. We raised two children through all levels of public school. We're boy scout leaders. My husband was a legal scout, board review. I've been a religious influence counselor. We got soccer kids, cheerleading kids. They're grown out of the house. I substitute teach. We supported this community with our time, talent, and treasure for a long time. I received a mailing about this property from the city on August 6th, just 13 days ago. That's all the notice I've had. It was only four pages, and it contained a 16-month-old cover letter, a conceptual rendering that finally, I finally figured out, was only two parcels of land, not seven or the three that want to be rezoned. It had a small tax assessors map, and two pages for the application, and they were incomplete with a lot of blanks. So after reviewing all these public documents that didn't offer much information, actually, I wrote to city council, the mayor, and I've heard just about from all of them, except for a few. And the recommendation I got from the mayor was to go to city council, because they are the people who are going to make this decision. Five people are going to make this decision, just five people. So the people here, if you would like your opinions known, you should write all those people and let them know how you feel, because they don't know if you don't tell them. And you can find their email addresses on the city of Sugar Hill website, and I'll have to find them if you find them later. My oppositions and questions are, how does a church and a group pub exist together? Is it camouflage as a church, but really a group pub distillery? I personally know people who are addicted to alcohol, and the last thing we're forming alcoholic need is war the poison. Their success rate is very low, and they never get out of recovery. It's a daily battle. Is this applicant going to apply for this entire property to be a nonprofit business? They currently have this status. Our church gets federal, state, and income tax exemptions, as well as they pay no property taxes. Then why apply for access and annexation in Sugar Hill? Will it be easier in Sugar Hill for some reason, and why? Doesn't Sugar Hill need the property tax money for the 28-plus acres? And why aren't they applying to Lenet County instead of here, who are already there? The last city of Sugar Hill work session, announcements application, it was stated by the city manager, the application is for a music venue. Play that video back, posted on the Sugar Hill website is there. The outdoor stage on this conceptual rendering, there is one, and the application states that they want to have 125 parking spaces with an overflow parking lot. We're concerned about sound traveling over our property from a music venue, and there are contours of all level on this land, mostly rock. I live on the rock as well. There's a huge valley in front of my home, and sound travels through here, highly 20 noises, very loud as well. And another concern with music venues comes with other distasteful things in society that are not attractive and a safety issue, alcohol, drugs, and crime. If Hillside Holdings is a for-profit business, their investors as well as their principal are all about profit. And so are churches. They have to have extra money to pay the life bill and salaries to the people in there. If you break it, if you have to break it, you can drive it. They all want more profit and buddy 28-plus acres for giving their rent. A special use permit, the last... A special use permit allows applicants to do just about anything they want. They can have any kind of event up there. We're concerned about traffic for the intersection. Safety is huge for us. We can hardly leave the subdivision with traffic, uh, is always backed up. We need the city to consider the density of our city of citizens and how many people pass through here daily. People waiting on the red light at highly twenty are blocking our ingress and ingress for our subdivision. Sugar Hill has always been a cutthroat city on the way to some other town. We don't want our corner of this city to look like our overbuilt downtown. We're bursting at the seams today. We're also concerned about the over-served people trying to exit the park, Publix parking lot. That's not easy for a sober person. The conceptual drawing only shows two parcels being developed. There's three parcels that are questioning business zoning. And the third property that they've given us nothing what they're gonna do with is separated by the Georgia Transmission Station. Are there EPA issues up there with that station? To cut it short, to give you more time to speak, I'm requesting that this application be tabled, so we can get some answers to our questions, and find out more what's going here, because we really haven't been given anything but concept. Thanks.
Very much. If you would like to clap, or any others, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi there. I am Allison Nelson, I'm homeowner and landlord, I'm president of the HOA. I am so opposed to this, that I had a whole speech written out, exposing the holes in this entire real deal, but an article just came out on the Real Deal Sugar Hill disclosing all of it. It would behoove everyone to read The Curious Case of a Proposed Church-Pub Event Center Complex. Since all that's covered in the article, I just want to go over the traffic and safety impact, specifically from my neighborhood. Traffic's already a nightmare for us. At times, we can't return to go to Sugar Hill. We have to drive in traffic, pass one again, turn into Kroger, take the light, left, just to be able to turn towards Sugar Hill, and then five to ten minutes later, we're passing our neighborhood to go towards Sugar Hill. The entrance this company will be utilizing for hundreds of cars is not an inch away from our exit lane. Not one inch of highway between our merging lane and their exiting lane. It's an immediate transition in an already dangerous one. Cars forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five miles per hour. At those speeds, there's not one second of a response window for someone to avoid an accident on our driver's side of the vehicle. And with regards to this exit, this exit here is going to back up immediately, so people will be driving, you guys can see, this way through Publix, uh, after having their drinks at the group hub they want to build. You know what's between that exit and drivers under the influence of alcohol from the group hub? Kids. Kids getting off the bus, crossing the road to go into a tutoring center, karate place, kids with kids, A high, single file line, they go all oversized backpacks, they're adorable. Now imagine their brains on the street because Hillside Holdings LLC wants to make money off of the alcohol. Lastly, the pastor Drew Warner, company Hillside Holding LLC, I'm concerned over the influence potentially Hillside Holdings has on the mayor and multiple voting city council members. The pastor's role is to influence, it's part of the job, but the mayor and some city council members through Facebook, can you see, friends with, attending stuff, promoting good life, and are ultimately subject to potentially Hillside Holdings LLC influence. How are the people supposed to expect a fair, unbiased, and uninfluenced vote on this proposal? I'm not against church, not against alcohol. The world needs more Jesus Christ, but maybe not in a location that will negatively impact quality of life and potentially put children in harm's way.
Thank you, Alex. Do you have any other people in opposition?
My name is Eric Cicero. I live at... Drive in Sugar Hill. I'm inside the city limits, and I have some, what I believe to be substantial environmental concerns. Uh, the concept overall is heartwarming. I, I do believe that all of the things the church plans to achieve, I'd like to see that happen, but I think that this is the wrong parcel of land in order to conduct this particular event. I'm particularly concerned about the water tables. Um, I had about twenty-four hours to prepare for this. I brought in a map. I was able to do limited research, and I'm gonna keep this short, but there are EPA concerns, as it was brought up earlier. Uh, there's sustainable materials management program on the UK's website. I don't know if any of these, uh, policies or programs have been investigated, uh, specifically heat soak. If we think about anyone that has, uh, stepped onto a parking lot, or even, uh, Gary Perkel Park, feels a lot hotter once you step off of the actual grass. The reason for that is the heat soak. Rain falls, it doesn't drain, it goes into drainage, into the sewer system, it's pushed away. So, we had one massive heat soak in the Kroger parking lot, one massive heat soak in Publix parking lot, and we're trying to put an additional one directly next to it. Also, there is a body of water about five hundred meters north, there's a body of water about two hundred meters south, and there's a big depression right in between, right alongside of where this proposed project runs, and I do feel that there may be issues with the water table. Uh, I'm sure Gwinnett County Water Department would have more information on this. I am not an expert on real estate or zoning, but I am substantially concerned about the environmental impact of this development. Uh, Gwinnett County Environmental Heritage Center has put together a wonderful presentation about how to do this correctly, and I don't see that in the proposal. Um, there are new technologies, there are new approaches to sustainable development built, and I don't see any of them in this project. I particularly oppose this, and I would like to see a review from an environmental sustainability perspective, and I'd like to see those metrics posted on the website, so that the rest of us can see what's about to happen to us, not only for us, but it's been mentioned, the deer are beautiful. The reason we're all seeing much more deer is because we build something here, and 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 the deer don't have anywhere to go, so they're just boxed into this little space. They can't be hunted, reproduce, and essentially, we are affecting biodiversity. I don't see any of that in the proposal, and I will admit, with twenty-four hours to prepare, I did not read any proposal or see anything about the effects on the loss of biodiversity. But I think we've skipped a lot of steps here, and I'd like to see a lot of these things reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can speak in opposition?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Michael Palmer. I live at... Rush Drive. I, um, our neighborhood is just adjacent to the proposed development, um, on the other side of Riverside. I've been a resident here for the past two and a half years, and during that time, I've seen an absolute explosion of population density and growth and development. The amount of time I sit in traffic on twenty increases on a weekly basis. Um, we've heard some of the safety concerns presented here this evening, uh, with children and pedestrians trying to cross the street, and we're talking about adding more traffic, more population to a very small area. That can't sustain it any longer. I'm opposed to the development for those reasons. I would like to know from the commission what the plan is to expand existing infrastructure to accommodate the growth. All I've seen in the last six months is another traffic light go up, and three hundred-plus units of apartment housing across the street, et cetera. It just keeps going. So, my question to you is, what is the plan to help offset the expansion that here is before you? What are you going to do to, um, the infrastructure as it exists today to accommodate the decreased traffic, so that we can cross streets safely, and we can, um, get from point A to point B without taking half the day to do it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Hubbard. I'm at... Lake Lane, that's in the Emerald Lake subdivision. Uh, one of the things that I haven't heard anyone talk about, that I sort of have a particular knowledge of, is public safety. Um, I've been in law enforcement for thirteen years, and I know what happens when you bring a lot of people together in a, uh, a closed environment. Um, I've responded to car break-ins, I've responded to stabbings, I've responded to fights, I've responded to any of the other litany of criminal offenses, as you could think of, that happen when a lot of people get together, and they start drinking, and they start getting behind the wheel of the car and drive. Um, I don't know, you know, what the exact crime rate in the city of Sugar Hill is, but I don't hear a lot of bad things happening very often, so my thoughts are that it's pretty low. Um, what I would hope that y'all would consider is the fact that when you have to have multiple responses from fire department, law enforcement, and EMS, and the impact that that has when you have negative stories coming out in your community about cars being broken into, people getting stabbed, people getting shot, and if you think that that's, uh, not a real statistic, um, I don't know if y'all have been down to the house yet, but I'm down there almost every night that I'm at work. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes. There you go. Is there anyone else? We have four and a half minutes left. Um, we, we have exceeded the time of those in, in favor, so you will be given some time afterwards for this. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? I just, we got...
Okay, so you go.
If, for case of time, if you fill out when you get done, that would be...
Yeah, fine. My answer would be, uh, the... Out of most of these people here, I would be the most intended one. My backside looks upon this problem. I look at their houses. I see the peacefulness. I used to feed their horses at this, all the time. If you guys do this, you're going to destroy my family's quality of life. If I come off my deck and watch a hundred-and-fifty people pull into the convention, and I have to sit there every night and watch this, this is unacceptable to my family. This is unacceptable to me. This is a high impact to my family. I've been there for twenty-four years, and I don't want to see this happen. That's all I want to say. You guys are going to destroy my quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm here, three and a quarter. But just before you do, is there anyone else that would like to speak prior to you?
Okay, I just wanted to say, I understand that there's this, um, idea of a pastoral setting is there, that will remain. But one thing that happens when a real estate deal closes, the seller, Drew, can go right away. The person can do anything with it they want to do unless restrictions are put on it, and at this point, there's no restrictions on each other. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, uh, Josh Engel. I live at, uh, Parkway, and my property is directly behind the area we're talking about. Um, as our HOA president said, as far as the, all of the stuff, as far as traffic, that's a total concern. I, I can barely get out of my neighborhood in the morning, just taking my kids to school, just making a right-hand turn. Um, but the, the whole thing, as far as the group hub, and church, and event venue, I've never been to an event venue that doesn't require security. I've never been to a church that does require security. So, you know, those things don't seem like they kind of go hand-in-hand with each other. Um, the, the noise level, the crime kind of comes along with that, the, the stuff that comes along with it, police being called and so on, with event venues and stuff, but, you know, serving alcohol late in the evenings. I haven't heard anything as far as, uh, you know, uh, noise abatement, you know, when time should be shut off, you know, uh, events. We're talking weddings. They go late at night, usually on the weekends. People are trying to sleep. We got, you know, the whole property area behind us that is normally pretty quiet, as I said, full of deer. Um, you know, we've got a lot of quiet in this, this behind the home, and I don't want to see any of that tackled. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes.
Josh and Robert both need to fill out...
Okay, there's Robert. Josh, if you, Josh, if you could go fill out a form for us, please, and, uh, turn that into Miss Livers. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Yes, the board.
Again, James January, twelve, two drop. Um, I guess one thing you say, I don't have a dog in this hunt, but I don't like what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing. This is very incomplete application. Seems to me there are a lot of sins. Why would these people not go to the county instead of coming to the city, adding a layer, another layer of taxes, unless they intend to use the church to avoid taxes? You know, that's, that's, uh, I think a legitimate concern. It seems to me that also, where this property is, this is the wrong place for this. It ought to be a budding, uh, swimming dam road, and perhaps maybe have some sort of limited-use park setting on, uh, on the, what is it, Tahrac Farm Road, uh, you know, for some limited use or something like that, that would still maintain the, uh, integrity of that property referenced to the Emerald Lakes, uh, residents there, or in fact, maybe put residences there, you know, since it's already, uh, I believe is owned as residential, uh, property. So, why not do that? It's just, overall, though, there are way too many, and I think there's sins on this thing. This thing should be tabled, and a lot more verification given before it's moved on. Thank you.
Okay. We have fifty-five seconds left. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Okay.
Hi, um, my name is Michael Jaja. Uh, I live at... Fallsway, Georgia. First of all, I just want to address my, uh, I just want to apologize for people that actually...
Excuse me, sir. My apologies, but please address everything to us, not to the...
Okay.
My apologies.
Yeah, I just want to apologize to the, uh, because for some kind of accusation, you know, that we already built before something happened, right, I'm a Christ guy myself. And the reason I'm here, uh, I'm going to oppose because, uh, I lived in Sugar Hill in that area since two thousand and eight. My daughter born there, my son was, grew up there, but since we were there when it was still two lanes road, right, um, that area is actually still safe, but right now, with the four lanes road, my wife got in an accident with my daughters because got hit because the car was supposed to, so fast right now. And then, I also know that, uh...
Excuse me, my, my apologies.
I'm sorry.
We have time.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I just want to mention also that there's one casual theory, one time, that actually somebody got killed on a motorcycle in that intersection. I don't know if you're aware of that, so I just don't want to add more dangers through that area. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay, yeah, the sir, sir, can you fill out a card as well there, fill that out, and then put it in Miss Livers'? Thank you. Miss Livers, how much time do we have, uh, in support?
Seven minutes.
Okay, we have seven minutes and fifty-five seconds. Um, those in support, if there is, uh, you would like to come back here and share regarding anything that was mentioned here or anything else, are there any more comments that would like to be presented for those in support?
My name is Peter T. Orsaghi. I live, uh, lens park subdivision. I've known Drew for about ten, fifteen years, and, um, I met him, and he really supports our community, our neighborhood. He has made it, and I was, I lived there for, since two thousand and two. When Drew came, he inspired the neighborhood, and we have a great HOA, great group of people in the neighborhood, who have really brought a sense of community there. He also did, works at, and works with, and, um, all pro-dads, high school, elementary school, middle school, he supports that. When he started his church, I went, I enjoyed it, but it wasn't for me. But I know him, and I know his character. I know his vision, what he wants to do. This is not go to church and have beer afterwards. It's more along the lines of enjoying church... It's more along the lines of enjoying church fellowship and then having something to enjoy where communication can continue. I've heard mention about crime, I've heard mention of traffic, but I don't see that. I see, I really don't see that. That's all I can say.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Please keep it down while we're here. Anyone else that would like to speak in support of this? Are there any questions for the speakers or the staff before we close the publication?
I have a question. At least I didn't receive a copy of the application itself. Do we have any verification for this 60% rule with regards to that, the applications?
Yes, we have the 60% of property owners and 60% of the electors' interest.
My question, quick question. Drew Moore, you all, it was mentioned about nonprofit versus for-profit. The, aside from the church, are the other aspects for-profit or not-profit, or is that still to be determined?
Yeah, everything that's being talked about with, that's for-profit business, that would be for-profit. That's why the Hillside Holdings LLC was formed, so that's going to be all for-profit. What we envision, and we're still trying to figure out what, how this all works, it's kind of a complicated deal with the land and the buildings and all that stuff, but sort of where we envision is what we've been doing already. The church meets out, so Monkey Ranch Brewing is a separate business, totally separate. Our, you know, there's no in-between finances either way, and we just meet in that space. And that's really sort of how we see this working, that Hillside LLC is a totally for-profit business, completely separate from the church. There's a relationship, there's overlap with a lot of people in the church who are a part of the LLC, but the church meets out of the space and just kind of doing ministry in the community in tandem. But there is no intention at all to use the church's nonprofit exemption to, you know, make more money or skirt taxes, or, that's not at all. I mean, that's, that's not, that's not the case.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Other questions?
Can I ask a follow-up?
Are you in opposition or in support?
It's a question.
Yeah, the questions are just asking for the members of the commission to, the staff, yes. If you'd like to speak in support, there still is time, but aside from that, my apologies, it's just for the commission.
I feel like a question for you. This is just for the annexation, this is not for something?
Correct, and that's a good question. So what we're going to do, this may feel a little challenging, but because of the details in there, we're going to have three separate motions. One will be for the annexation, one will be for a portion that does, and then one for a portion that does not have any additional recommendations. So one will be for the one that doesn't have recommendations, it's just straight up, and then another that does have recommendations. So yes, the first, the first motion will be for annexation only, it won't indicate anything about what will be done in these various...
Okay, for commission members' questions, then, is this, should we be asking questions just in relation to annexation, or will we have another time period to ask for the reason?
We can give another time period, let's, to make it simple, let's just do it for annexation right now, and then we'll move on to the next. So are there any other questions? Thank you for that, quick answer. Are there any other questions regarding annexation? You like our motion regarding the annexation? I'm making a motion to annex, AX 24002, with all seven parcels to Sugar Hill. Right here, second.
Second.
Okay, you have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Three, okay, all opposed, say nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries, okay. Now for a second aspect, now the, unless we have other questions for someone who's already here, this will be for, for the commission. It'll be a momentary pause, just making sure that we're getting the correct... My apologies for the momentary pause and just making sure that I have the right... Aspect, and if you would confirm that we have this correct, there is, there are, of the seven parcels, there are three parcels that have conditions on them, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And so can you put up a picture for the commission of the three parcels that we're, we're going to be looking at that have, that have recommendations attached to them?
Neither of the three parcels.
And on these three parcels will be any changes, any buildings, et cetera, or...
One of the conditions that Stockton's recommending is that the development shall substantially conform to the site plan with room for accommodations for the other conditions listed by Stockton. That being said, this is the site plan that was submitted, I believe, to be conformed to for the building.
Okay, and if I can add one question, it was indicated from the, those in support, that number 13 on your, that particular pickleball court that was going to be eliminated, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
They're both labeled as sectioned.
Oh, excuse me, my apologies. Thank you for the correction. The one on the right, that is labeled 13, that is farthest away from problems closest to the housing?
That's correct.
Okay. Would that be considered part of that? Or we should consider that as part of the...
No, it is not. One of the, condition number five is that any of those pickleball courts shall be a minimum of 500 feet from residential properties. If soundproofing or sound absorption products are used, course shall be a minimum of 250 feet from residential properties. That pickleball court lies within 500 feet, so...
So already it wouldn't be allowed?
No, it would not, per the, per condition number five.
Okay, so we do the, per conditions, that the right pickleball court is not allowed. Are there any other indications on this map that they have as far as the layout that would be disallowed by the recommendations, or would that be the only one?
That would be the only one.
Okay, so at present, if we vote for the recommendations, the right court is already out of... Any other questions or comments?
This is for the rezoning for those three parcels.
This is for the rezoning for those three parcels, the ones that include the recommended action.
Okay, I'm a new kid on the block here, so I'm going to have a lot of questions for this, please bear with me. It says that we should have a site plan, what we have is a concept rendering, not a site plan. I don't see any dimensions on here to show any of the recommended actions that would match up. We've got 50 foot from 75 foot, I don't see 50 feet marked anywhere on here on the map, so I can't verify that. The variance for the 15 foot to 75 foot, I don't see a 15 foot marker on here that shows that anything is 15 foot away from a boundary, so I can't verify that. I do have a question, in the ordinances, we have two different types of churches listed in the ordinances, one is a restricted, one is an unrestricted, they both have different zoning requirements. Do we know which version of church this would fall under? That is a quick question, and we will find that out for you. Okay. I also, since we don't have a current traffic studied on this, to the Institute of Traffic Engineers website, they have a spreadsheet on there that you can plug in, different facilities, based on the facilities that are mentioned here. Their spreadsheet shows that we'll have an increase of 224 trips per day down the main street there. So without any, any mentions of facilitating that, I don't know what to make of that. I do appreciate the pickleball court that is closest to the buildings, has been mixed from this. I would love to see an updated map that actually has dimensions on here. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can get better information from the applicants.
No, last thing. You have a second, so we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? There's a motion, then. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining? Okay, now we have a, motion carries, okay, to table. We now have the other four parcels that do not have any recommended, recommendations. A question for, do we have any other questions? It's indicated as rezoning, but these are, are these rezoned, or are we just putting it into, in a sense of changing the zone, or are we just putting it into our terminology, the closest zoning that is there?
Yes, there would be annexed and rezoned to the Sugar Hill classification that is most similar to their current, when at county designation.
So there's no actual, exactly, any difference that we might have between us and Glen County in the specifics? There's no difference in the zoning between Glen County and here except for a change in name to fit our zoning. Is that accurate?
There may be some small code differences, but again, the most similar designation that we have to the same.
Very good, very good. Okay. Other questions? Do I have a motion for the four zoning parcels, the four parcels that will not have any recommended?
I motion that we annex these four parcels into the zonings that are recommended.
Okay. Can I ask to clarify, most we've already, we've already recommended.
See, this is on the rezoning of the full domain parcels. Okay, clarification. I would like to recommend, or make a motion that we zone these four parcels as recommended.
Very good, is there a second? All in favor, say aye?
All in favor, opposed, no?
Very good.
Mr. Chair, now it would be time to reclaim our, from the accused, to plan, commission member.
Thank you. And we will bring back our plan, commission member that has been annexed.